I wasn't back.
The thing I needed to work around got rescheduled, so. Are you guys all set?
Okay. All right, let's call the February 14, 2018 Heinsburg Planning Commission meeting order. So first agenda item is agenda changes. Does anybody have agenda changes for tonight? All right. Move on to public comments for non-agenda items. One member of the audience, I assume you're here for...
To listen.
To listen, okay.
Welcome Gil. John, do you know Gil? This is Gil Coates.
Nice to meet you.
O A T E S.
Thank you.
Is it one L or two Ls?
Two Ls.
And Gil.
All right, so item number three, move on. Housekeeping changes. So final draft review and perhaps a motion.
Yeah, so I gave you a memo outlining the changes that you had asked me to make. Hopefully I didn't miss any. And I only printed off a couple of hard copies of the actual track changes version of the regs. They're on the table there, but I sent you the digital, so. Last opportunity, if you want to change anything further before you send it on to the Select Board.
I had a question, Alex. There are a number of places within the regulations, both in the zoning and the subdivision, that indicate what kind of time period notice has to be given before an issue is going to be discussed. Sometimes it says seven days, sometimes it says 15 days. I don't know whether there's a requirement for it to be shorter for some of those and otherwise 15 days. It seems to me that if there isn't a requirement, why don't we make it always the same?
Right.
It's hard enough to follow when the meetings are occurring and give people time to actually prepare to come to a meeting. If they could all be 15 days, it seems to just be more logical.
So there's, um, there are several different timelines in the regs, as you mentioned, John. Some of them are related to notice periods for development review proceedings. Some of them are appeal periods for zoning permits, the time in which a neighbor has to appeal it before the permit is valid. And others relate to the time that someone has to cure a violation, once the zoning administrator has found them in violation. And then there's another time horizon for how soon after the DRB closes a hearing it has to render a written decision.
Right, I'm talking about the first one.
You're talking about just notification to the public.
Notification that there's going to be issue discussed at a public meeting.
So I believe that the only difference there is in the zoning regulations between site plan review and, I'm trying to think if there's another review, reviews that per state statute don't require a formal notice in the paper, don't require a formal public hearing, those, I believe we, let me get to the right section. I believe we talk about having to have a minimum of seven days, whereas the others are required to have at least 15 days. And this idea that you're suggesting of just making it longer for the ones that we could do more quickly is, we could talk about that.
I'm not thinking so much about how quickly we do it, but what kind of notice we give to the public to come and appear and speak to us about it. It seems to me fair enough to have it all 15 days.
Yeah, so without finding that actual section where we talk about that, the reason why we haven't in the past is that things like site plan review under statute are, have a lesser notification period with the idea that, A, perhaps they're not as controversial, but B, it allows a development project to move through the permitting system faster. And so for some fairly innocuous site plan revisions, that makes sense, where say Lampman's wants to put a salt shed on the corner of their parking lot and they need a, an amendment to their site plan because they're going to eliminate two parking spaces and it's, you know, not a big deal. Others, like Hanaford, which is going through a site plan review for a brand-new, you know, very large grocery store, much more notice would make a whole lot of sense. So there is a reason and a benefit to having a short horizon on some of these things, but what you're saying makes sense to me, you know, more, giving the public a longer period of time, you know, would slow down some of these projects a bit, but it would certainly give community members more time to react.
The difference between seven days and 15 days, that doesn't seem to be significant to me, but again, my response is, my position is to serve the public, give them adequate notice.
I'm not sure that it's been an issue in the sense of, I haven't, in the time that I've been here, I haven't heard too many people complain about not receiving adequate notice. The DRB in particular, maybe you two can speak to this, seems fairly compassionate on that front and willing to continue the review if somebody has an issue and wants to see it addressed. But while you're thinking of that, all of you, let me find the sections of the regs that John's talking about, because we should, if we're going to talk about this, we should be talking about specific areas that you want changed. No.
No.
No. John's raising some, a new, a new concern or idea.
Does it ever happen that there'll be, you know, one week after something is submitted that it would be seen before the DRB?
It's usually so booked.
Hmm, it does happen, yeah. So what happens upstairs in our office is we have our whiteboard with the next three or four meetings scheduled, and we have all the dates of, you know, we have to get an application by this date to, in order to get the notice out for this meeting. Our general rule of thumb is, what we tell applicants is, for non-warned applications like site plan, we want their application two weeks before, so we have time to actually look at it, process it, and then get the notifications out at least a week prior to the meeting. And for warned applications, we tell applicants, we really want them four weeks before, so we have the same time horizon and we can do the longer notice. In practice, there are times when, usually it's a business, you know, stops in for a zoning permit and the zoning administrator says, well, I can't issue a permit for that because you have to amend your site plan and it's an innocuous thing, and we stick them in, as long as we can still get the notice out within the week. So it does happen, not a lot, but it does happen. Sketch plan review for subdivisions happens that way as well, because those don't require a formal notice or public hearing. We use that same minimum one week notice for those. And those can, those can come in relatively quickly, where somebody comes in with an idea for a minor subdivision and we do up some maps for them and everything sort of, you know, looks good, and they formally submit the application and then we schedule it, as long as we can get a week's notice out. So I'm still, sorry, I'm still looking to find out where in the regs we talk about those seven days versus 15 days.
Do you want to include this in the housekeeping changes or?
If we ever had an issue, I don't want to do it the way it is.
Seemed like a minor thing, though, and a generous offer to the public.
Basically, it comes down to 10 days. If it's going to be 14, because weekends you can't count. Let's say you don't know about something until day five of the issue.
Now here's where we want it.
Oh, you know, all right. Subdivisions, okay.
And it is one of the red ones, so that's one of the changes that we had talked about.
Yeah, I was in the zoning and it may not, it may not be reflected in the zoning regulations. The subdivision regulations have more specificity with regard to application hearing time horizons. I think in, for site plan review and the zoning, it's just been our practice based on the statutory requirements to have a two-tiered system.
So John, you're really talking about a warning of public notice.
Yeah, that's all.
So Alex, in that seven days, do you count weekends?
Yeah, it's seven days, seven actual days.
So that really gives the public five days.
No.
Because you're closed on the weekend.
No, it's, they get their notice seven days before the hearing, and then that's their, that's their notice that they, if they're interested, they should come to the hearing. They're welcome to contact us for more info as well, but that's, the purpose of the notice is mostly to say, the board's talking about this application, you might be interested because you're a butter, that's who we send these notices to, come, come to the meeting. Sometimes folks will, oftentimes folks will then call us and say, you know, what's this about, or stop by, and then we'll show it to them, and more often than not, they say, okay, whatever, I don't care. Sometimes they then come.
Even though this is just a preliminary plat hearing, it is for a major subdivision. And major subdivisions are more likely to raise questions in the neighborhood.
Yeah, so I think the way this is written in the subdivision regs, it's sketch plan, of a sketch plan review for a subdivision and preliminary plat review for a major subdivision do not require warned public hearings, and so they, we say in these housekeeping changes that we're going to, we're going to provide notice, seven days notice, at least seven days notice. And for final reviews, they do require public hearings, so we're going to provide at least 15 days notice. So John, basically what you're saying is, why not boost that?
Make them all 15.
Make it all 15 for every step of the subdivision process.
Yeah, which adds eight days of waiting time, as it were.
So what that means on our end administratively is that if somebody that we've been working with on a, say, a sketch plan application for a subdivision, you know, we've provided them some maps, they're thinking about their options, they've made their decision to go ahead, they give us the application with the maps and their check. In order to get the notice to people 15 days before the hearing, there'll be a four-week, three and a half to four-week lead time that we'll need to have that material from them. Because we can't send notices out the day they drop off the application, we have to actually look at the application and...
And conclude, yes, complete.
Exactly, and that can, sometimes that sits in our queue for a few days before we can even look at it. So that's, just know that if you standardize it, you'll, we will be standardizing that sort of four-week, four weeks ahead submission requirement in order to make, make the 15-day notice requirement.
Have you ever seen an issue or?
I have seen issues where neighbors have felt like they didn't get adequate notice, absolutely. I don't think it happened as a result of a seven-day versus a 15-day. It was, it may have been a 15-day notice and they didn't pick up their mail or whatever. But yeah, we definitely hear from folks every once in a while that they didn't feel like they had notice, and usually your board hears about it when that happens, and they're asking for more time, you know, to have, have it looked at or what have you.
But Dennis says he hasn't heard about it.
Yeah, it doesn't happen very often, but it, it has happened in my tenure. It's also happened a couple times where we've forgotten and the butter.
Usually they'll take all more time just because they don't know anything about the project until they come to the meeting and then hear about it.
Yeah, well, that's true.
I mean, they don't know much about the, what's going on until the first meeting.
Right, because that's where the project is presented and, yeah, that's true, too.
Does it change that notice, would it change the submission requirements on the part of the applicant?
Nope, just the timing that we would tell them. You know, like I said, now we tell people, sketch plan and preliminary, you got to get us the application at least two weeks prior to the, to a meeting that has availability for final approvals that require the larger notice, we say it's got to be four weeks. So wouldn't change what they submitted, it would just change the, the advance, the lead time we would be telling them.
Okay. So it doesn't affect that?
Okay. Yeah. From an administrative standpoint, it'll work either way, I think. It is nice at times to be able to stick one of these projects, sketch plan or site plan or whatever, onto a DRB agenda that has room in it, but we've passed the, the longer warning period and somebody happens to walk in the door and it's a straightforward application, we can, we can stick them in there. But other than that, it wouldn't change things a whole lot.
It's talking about major site plan, not talking about two steps.
For preliminary.
For preliminary, not talking about two-step processes, talking about the three-step process.
Well, and that, that's another option that you could think about, is whether to extend the preliminary plat, which is the second step of a three-step major subdivision review, extend that to 15 days and leave the sketch plan review, which is the first conceptual level review to seven.
Having people gotten the notification for the sketch. I mean, they've been getting notification all along.
True.
Right? So I mean, they know the preliminary's coming.
They do, they don't know when it's coming, and they, they really wouldn't have any idea of when it's coming until they get the notice from us. It is, John's right, I mean, the preliminary plat review is a pretty important step in the, in a major subdivision review process. That's where the, sort of the guts of the subdivision get reviewed, right? The, all the technical engineering and landscaping, so.
Going back.
Wouldn't be, wouldn't be a bad thing to have more notice for folks on that, because there's a lot to look at. Whereas a sketch plan review, it's very conceptual, I don't know that, having that extra time's going to matter a whole lot. Plus, it's the first time anybody's seen the project, so like you said, they may need to come to the meeting just to sort of understand it. Anyways, those are two things you could do. You could change them all to 15, or you could change preliminary plat to 15, leave sketch plan the way it is. I will say, I started off this whole spiel about site plan review, and I'm pretty sure we don't define the warning periods in our zoning regulations for site plan review. We, we do it administratively based on the statutory requirements. So if you were interested in having us give more public notice on things like site plan review, which are not covered in the subdivision regs, but in the zoning regs, we'd need to either just make that change in-house or write something new into the zoning regs to that effect. But it sounds like, John, you're mostly concerned with the subdivision protocol.
Yeah, and mostly concerned with giving adequate notice to the folks who might be impacted by the subdivision, the major subdivision.
I don't see any harm in changing it to 15 days. Seems reasonable.
Make it uniform across the board, 15 days.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I mean, figure where John's coming from. I mean, I agree. Sounds like we haven't heard a lot, so I'm kind of in the, if it's not broke, do we need to fix it? But I do understand where John's coming from on a major subdivision, you know, just, you know, when you're in this every day, you know what's going on, but when you're out in the community, you, you don't, you know, so I'm not opposed to it.
I don't know. I just should leave it the way it is.
Yeah, that's kind of my opinion, too. I like the flexibility offered to the, you know, the zoning department, and I don't, I don't see a lot of breakage here, but, you know, I think majority wins.
So the specific section that John pointed out to me is 3.3.2 of the subdivision regulations. So I'm going to make a note of that. Change from seven to 15. And that is the section that, that is on the preliminary plat, public hearing, when it says, "Public notice shall be provided no later than seven days prior to DRB review pursuant to state statute." And we would change that to say, "Public notice shall be provided no later than 15 days prior to DRB review," and I would drop the statutory reference because it's not relevant anymore. We're gonna, we're doing something above and beyond what statute requires. And I'm looking for the same thing in the sketch plan section, but I'm not finding it. So I know what our protocol has been on that, but the construction of these regulations might, might not have laid that out for sketch plan quite as specifically. So if you'd like to add this to the sketch plan requirement, and again, to refresh your memory, subdivision is a multi-step review. It starts with sketch plan, then for major subdivisions, it goes to preliminary and then final. For minor subdivisions, it goes from sketch directly to final. If you want to specify that public notice shall be provided 15 days prior to the hearing, at least, I'll need to add that, which I can do, it's no, no big deal.
Alex, what's our experience with, you know, it's, it's one thing to begin the process, giving notice seven or 15 days ahead of time, but how many times does an approval of that step happen at that first and only meeting? You know, if, if discussion goes on for several meetings, which I think it is more likely to for a major project than for a minor project, then the additional notice is even more important if, if it gets approved the very night it's being discussed, then there's no extra time.
My experience, John, is that almost never is a, is a sketch plan application approved the night that it is first heard. Usually what happens is, a staff report's drafted, the applicant presents, there might be a butters there to ask questions, and the board might close the hearing and start deliberating on it and, and then decide on it at another, at the next meeting, or if there's any questions, they'll continue it. It's our, it's been our policy in the planning and zoning office not to walk into sketch with any kind of proposed decision, because we don't, it's the, it's the first time that the board has heard a project, and so we don't want to presume that there might not be new issues that we're not seeing. So it, it usually doesn't get an approval at that meeting, but it is not, it's not uncommon for the board to close the hearing at that meeting, which I guess from a public input standpoint is the same thing.
It's done.
Because then, then it's done. If you haven't, if you weren't there, you didn't get your chance to say anything.
And you get instructions, the planning department gets instructions to draft up the decision, which comes back to the next meeting, but...
But not for public discussion.
You can't, you can't raise your hand and say, wait a minute, what you just drafted, I disagree with.
Yeah, yeah. So again, I'm happy to put this in the sketch plan section of the subdivision regs. There isn't a place like there was for preliminary where it's already there and I can just tweak it, I just need to craft a sentence and stick it in the right section. If, I assume that's what you want. We asked to make it consistent, that seemed like what the majority was looking for. Okay, got it.
Other comments on housekeeping?
Well, it seems there are several, it looks like, big issues that we keep putting off for future discussion. So can we approve these without discussing those? For example, where are they? Setbacks was one of them. Accessory apartments.
Yeah, there were several items where there, the commission indicated that more discussion was needed and, and that the rest of the housekeeping changes shouldn't be held up on account of failing to find consensus or, or needing to thrash these other pieces.
It's bigger than a housekeeping change.
Yeah.
But that should hold up the other smaller ones, I think is what Alex is saying, right?
Well, I think that's, that's what...
A good chunk in there.
That's what you were talking about, is you've got a lot of, you've got a lot of non-controversial or non-complicated changes, or at least changes that had consensus, and it sounds like you're ready to move those forward, even if there are others that will wait for another day to be resolved.
So we can do that? We can, it's okay to send things?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You, you can decide not to make any changes and say, let's just go on to something else. I don't want to do this at all. Yeah. As long as the changes you're proposing are consistent with the town plan, you can make whatever changes you want.
I think, Barb, some of those unresolved things, we're going to come back to.
Yeah, they will be on the list.
Yes, yes, exactly. So what I've done is, all ones that indicated you wanted further discussion, they now populate the new future changes list, so I've got about two pages or three pages of things you want to talk about again, but I'm not going to let you talk about them until we make some progress on retail size caps and design standards and village growth area stuff. We'll just save, save those for another day.
Come on. Okay.
I thought that, that looked good.
All right. Want to add for a motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we, what do we do? Forward these to the Select Board as written?
Sounds like with one amendment.
Yeah, with one amendment to the...
The receipt of...
Notification time period.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. No opposed. All right, done with number three. We can go on item four.
So Maggie and Jeff and I met and discussed this topic a bit, and my task was to give you some information on sizes of existing buildings. I had already done that back in 2011, but I went through and just sort of rechecked it and gave you a bunch more. So that little table is on the, is on that table. Jeff did a bunch of online research, and Maggie, who's not here tonight, did some phone calling to see if we could bring in some speakers specific to the grocery store side of the equation. Specifically, she was trying to get ahold of the guy who's in the process of selling the, these local markets, the Jericho Market, Richmond Market, Shelburne Market, to another buyer, and she, I can tell you that she, he's away until May, but she spoke with his partner and, and she has been working with him the whole time, and Maggie was very, said she, she had lots of good perspective, and so I don't know if she's trying to get her to come in instead of him, but she said she was still shooting for, for March, if the commission is interested in having some people come in and talk about that. If you're not, it would be good for her to know that at the conclusion of this meeting so she can cease and desist with her efforts to bring some people in. so she can cease and desist with her efforts to bring some people in. You want to tell them what you found out, John?
Yeah, so I guess this is my retail size cap limit, all that good stuff. So just, just to recap, we talked a little bit about, um, sort of, when it comes to the Commerce area, standardizing that section of town with the rest of the Village Growth area. So one of the reasons I, I had talked about that was the, and as the, the list that Alex put together, you know, the, the largest building in the Commerce Street area is, uh, Nezthac, which isn't retail at, um, 22,000 square foot of a footprint. It's 27,000 square foot overall. But the largest retail is, is Obashan Plaza at 1908. So as the other areas around it are at 20,000 square feet, the hope was to put the 20,000 square foot limit in Commerce to, it's, it, it was never seen as the ultimate end goal. It was about keeping it consistent so that we can build on that. The other topic that I brought up was the general move, especially in terms of grocery stores and retail shops in towns that they are going smaller, not larger. Um, I asked Alex to put a, um, it was specifically about Hannaford, where I had mentioned that a lot of grocery stores are going smaller. They're getting under 20,000 square feet. You've got Walmarts and Targets that are also going smaller in that direction. So one of the concerns was we don't want to be going the old way of huge commuter-style shops. We want to go to the smaller pedestrian-friendly type shops. And I, I know when, you know, and I don't want to make this a Hannaford anti-Hannaford because I don't really, I have nothing against Hannaford, but, you know, they had said, "Well, this is as small as we go, 36,000 square feet." And now since then, they, the, what I did is they have a press release that now they are coming out with a 20,000 square foot model as that's sort of, is where the trend is headed. So, um, the goal here was to kind of hopefully standardize so that we can continue to build on our design regulations. Uh, so we put forth the cap limit to, for interim zoning to the select board. As Alex said, they, if you watched it or were there, um, it, it got denied. A lot of it sounds like, you know, they, they did have a meeting about legal representation. It sounds like a lot of it had to do with that. You know, whether they were for the cap or against the cap, the, the legal seemed to be the swaying motion that everybody was like, "It's probably not a good idea." So that being said, uh, we talked a little bit about, you know, what else can we do? You know, since we can't get a cap in place, what can we do to talk about sort of size limit and building design? Just generally, not just in Commerce Park, but, but pretty much everywhere. So we looked at some ideas, um, you know, what it, one of the t- action items I had is take a look at how other towns do it. Do they have building cap sizes? Do they not? How do they deal with how big they want to, uh, buildings to be in their towns? And I think, as you know, most of ours are based on, I think, lot area size. Like you can be 60% of total lot area coverage.
Lot coverage is how we term it. Yep.
Yeah. So I took a look around, um, in multiple places. I, first I looked at towns in Vermont. A couple of them did have building size limits that said you can't be larger than X. A lot of those that did say that though said, "However, in the cases of grocery stores," kind of like we were talking, the older model is they can go a little bigger. We, some of them just didn't even mention it at all, or they leaned the way we do about lot area each coverage. So I went out outside of Vermont and said, "Okay, well, what, what's happening sort of in the larger trend where communities are looking at design and they're trying to do the pedestrian friendly and the, you know, the, the neighborhood and, and what we're trying to get to in our plan?" And a lot of them seem to be going, um, and I'm not saying this is necessarily right with it, but it might, it's a discussion point, is this concept of, um, floor area ratio. It's called FAR. I don't know, maybe the architects in the room know what I'm talking about here. But it's a concept where, and I'm, I'm sorry, we're gonna get some diagrams, man.
So I apologized. I told Jeff I would give you all definition of, of floor area ratio and I forgot to put it in your packet. I don't know why it slipped out of my head, but-
So I, I don't know. I don't really know. Pass my phone around, but there's a nifty little Java here diagram. But basically, the concept is if you have a lot, um, that is so big, and let's say you say you want, I don't know, you, you can make any ratio. We could keep our 60% coverage. You could say, "You know what? It can't be more than 40,000 square feet." Whatever it happens to be that we calculate how big a building is. Uh, you can use this concept of floor area ratio to sort of, it's meant to drive density, but it gives designers and developers a tool where, uh, we can put a number on it. So for example, I'll try to keep math easy here. So let's say we, we said a lot can have 40,000 square feet of buildable building on it. However, we come up with that number, whether it's percentage or whatever, 40,000 square feet I can do. So if you've got a FAR, a floor area ratio of one, that means you could build a one-story building up to 40,000 square feet on that piece of property. If you have a floor, if we say, "You know what? Buildings in that area can only have a FAR ratio of .5." It means the biggest floor space you can have is 20,000 square feet, but you could go up to two stories at, at 40,000 max. Or if you say it's a .25, you, you kind of get the math. It would be 10,000 square foot floor, up to forty, up to four stories to 40,000 square feet. So you can define these ratios in different areas to kind of define how you want buildings. Do you want them to go up? Do you want them to go wide? So I gave an example of one to lower. You could also say, "Well, you could have one of two," which means I could fill up the whole thing and go two stories. Right? That's another option. Kind of, that's where you get into the more mega centers and that type of thing. So typically, the lower the FAR ratio number, the more dense you become. You kind of get smaller and up. So I don't know. It was an interesting concept. It seems to be, um, the concept that most of the people that are talking about design regulations and, and working with building sizes and up-downs are going down this route. There, you know, it, it's not without controversy, right? There's, there's two sides to each story. Some people say it's great for dealing with density and how do you want a building? And do you, how big do you want it? What size do you want in your space? Uh, other people say, you know, it can be limiting because, you know, it impacts developers and what they can build and, you know, that could increase land values and things like that. So it's an interesting topic. I think we just need to talk a little bit more, and this is kind of straight out of the last meeting we had where it was, "Let's talk about building sizes more than just 20,000 square feet, but, but how do we want to kind of mold that building size?" And, you know, am I making sense? So I'm looking at tools that are out there today. This being one of them. It sounded kind of interesting. But I just want to maybe have the conversation, kind of a step one of the design standards of, you know, how do we want to define building sizes on, on lots? You know, are we just gonna go with percentage of? Are we gonna try to somehow say, you know, if, maybe if, if a building is over X size or retail or business, then we can talk about FARs? Like maybe we don't want a 20,000 block. We would rather have a 10,000 two-story. You know, that, that's the kind of conversation I think we need to think about and have.
Yeah, I get where you're going. I don't-
Yeah.
There's really a problem with it. I, I think, I, I've been trying to step, one step back and say, "Well, I mean, what do we want to incentivize"
Right.
in this area? You know, what do we want this area to look like? And what do we want to de-incentivize?
Right.
And then, and try and come up with a zoning proposal that tries to meet those ads. Right? So, you know, if we're, if we're trying to get more space between buildings, right? And we don't necessarily want to fool with, with square area, then, then we have to think about incentivizing multi-story. Right? Um, you know, figure out a formula that does that. You know, I also, you know, think about, I mean, the, you know, the, the recent discussion has really been around a single use at X number of square feet.
Right.
But, you know, the majority of things I can see going in a commercial area, Obashan Plaza is the, you know, um, example of this. You got that square footage and you got multiple uses in it. You know, you got multiple smaller uses.
Oh, it's all retail.
It's all retail, but it's, it's not a single retailer. Right? I mean, you know, the, what's analogous to me is if, if I look in, in some Maple Tree Place, right? Okay, you, you may like Maple Tree Place, you may not. You may like part of it, you may not. But that central square area, if you look at it, they have, they have buildings that are more or less rectangular. If you had to walk it to try and figure out what the frontal footage is, but, you know, you got four, five, six shops on the first floor. You got professional space or, or residential space on the second floor. Right? Kind of looks mixed use to me. I kind of like that model over a straight commercial model, you know, for, for the town. You know, I think it encourages multi-story. I like that. It encourages mixed use. It encourages, you know, a variety of establishments and services for a community.
So I, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I agree with it. I, I, I like the, the multi-story, multi-use, and by multi-use, it's not just commercial. It's also got residential or, you know, it's office and retail. It, you know what I mean? That type of thing. But, you know, you mentioned about incentivizing or de-incentivizing. And while I agree with that, I also think there, there might be room for us to dictate a little bit more about what it is we want. So for example-
Well, I, I think, I think we're saying the same things in different ways.
Yeah. So, you know, if, maybe if I'm hearing you right, we should agree on what do we want design-wise the Village Growth Area to sort of look like, you know, and we can talk about that. And then how, how do we do that in a regular, regulatory way that doesn't stymie growth, but encourages it, but encourages it in the way that we want it?
What do we do currently, you guys? I mean, I can't say I've gone in red recently. Uh, whether it's the village area itself or the northwest area or the northeast area, or there's some other areas. There's a, a limit on the footprint. Is it the footprint?
There's a limit on how much of the lot can be covered with stuff, whether it's parking or building.
Okay. There is no limit on footprint size?
Correct.
Anywhere?
Except for retail.
Retail is the only thing that's limited?
Yeah.
And how is that phrased or how is that stated?
Uh, I can tell you.
There's, I'm, I'm assuming there's no incentivizing in this language or de-incentivizing in this language.
Not really. I mean, the design standards aren't really specific and
Just says size.
formulations don't, you know, in, in this area, you know, don't give one, you know, bonus points or extra freedom to design, you know, based on attributes of, of, you know, what's going to be designed.
Well, so, so let me just tell you what it says. So, so in the Village District, which is the same zoning as the Village Northwest District, retail shops and stores of 1,000 square feet or less are permitted use. Retail shops and stores, um, and service establishments uh, of 1,000 square feet up to a maximum of 20,000 square feet are a conditional use.
They are.
So it's just, it's just telling you there's a, there's a, there's a cap in those districts. Now, in our density bonus section of the regs that we created for the Village Growth Area, there is, there are residential density bonuses that can be acquired and then there are non-residential density bonuses for commercial, you know, uses and structures. And some of the bonuses that we provide for commercial, light industrial, non-residential uses are, um, allowing the maximum lot coverage to increase. Like do this good thing and we'll let you cover more of your lot with building or parking or what have you. Increasing height. So right now, we have a maximum height of 35 feet, but if you do some of these good things, you can get a bonus of, of, up to additional 10 feet. So a no, a whole nother story potentially. And required parking. We have a bonus that says if you do these good things, we will reduce the amount of parking that you need by a certain percentage so that you can use more of the lot presumably for building.
But it does not apply to retail establishments?
All of these apply to retail and light industrial and office. All these bonuses apply to those.
Except for the commercial district, right?
No, no, no. It applies across the whole, the whole Village Growth Area, all the zoning districts. But none of these allows a, a retail use to be more than 20,000 square feet, right?
No matter what the density-
No matter how many floors.
Doesn't matter how, how tall it is, how, how little parking it has, how much of the lot is covered with stuff. If you're a retail use-
Twenty is the limit.
In 20,000 is the, is the limit. Now, again, as Joe mentioned, Obashan is not in the Village District, so it's not capped anyways. But Obashan Plaza is, you know, pushing up to 20,000 square feet, but it's not one retail use. It's several businesses, none of which are close to 20,000. Our interpretation has always been it's, it's the retail use that is limited to that. So it's got to be a single-use
Yep.
uh, business that would, that would be limited in that way.
But if that's not in-
So you could build a 100,000 square foot building.
Yes.
In the commercial district.
Yeah. In any district. You could build 100,000 square foot-
I thought it was just the commercial building. You get away with that.
No. So in the Village District, if, if I built a 100,000 square foot building and chopped it up into 15,000 square foot retail uses within the building, each of those retail uses would comply with the under 20,000 square foot cap.
That's awesome.
So that's obviously never gonna happen in Heinsberg.
I think the bigger question here is what do you want the 100,000 square feet to look like?
Right. Exactly.
Don't, don't meld yourself to the single use. What do you want the 100,000 square feet to look like? And, and, and if, if, if you're okay with how that 100,000 square feet looks like, right, what it looks like, then what do you care about the internal partitions for? I think that's a question you got to ask.
And where did the 20,000 square foot retail limit come from, you guys?
So the history of it was that, uh, in the beginning, Heinsberg created zoning and it had a commercial district. And in that commercial district, more commercial uses were allowed than, than were in other parts of town. And there was no size cap on anything. And then in, I think it was, oh, I'm forgetting the dates now. Um, when the Village District was first created, the commercial district was left. The Village District was created next to it and the commercial district continued to not have any limits and the Village District was introduced with a 10,000 square foot limit on retail uses. And then about 10 years later, 1996 or 20 years later, that changed from 10 to 20,000. So the cap grew. And why that original Village District was conceived with a 10,000 square foot cap on retail? I don't know. It was so long ago. I, I don't know the history of it. My guess is that, as you can see, Heinsberg's different, our village area is different from Bristol or, um, Virgin's or Richmond even in that we don't have, um, what you would think of as traditional commercial blocks or buildings. Uh, you know, these two or three-story buildings with, you know, windows and, and we have residential houses
Standalone buildings.
that have been converted into, um, non-residential uses. Or we have in Lantman's case, what was, I think, a hotel, um, that was converted into that use. So my guess, this is just my guess, is that when that Village District was created, there was some recognition, right? That, that, um, most of the commercial uses in the village were very small scale. So why not, why not have a cap and keep them all-
Keep it looking that way.
Yeah, exactly. But, but why it was set at 10,000? I don't know. That's still very large. And why it then moved up to 20,000, which is also very large, I, I don't know the reasoning behind that.
And do you, do, um, is there an understanding of why that 20,000 square foot limit was applied to retail establishments and not to any other kind of establishment?
That I don't know. And, and it's been that way from the beginning, that it's just been the, uh, tag to retail. Well, and service establishments as well.
Service being like, uh-
Like, uh, dry cleaner, barber shop, um,
Nail salon.
Nail salon, yeah, that sort of, uh, that sort of thing. Yeah, why it wasn't applied to, um, uh, light industrial, I don't know because Heinsberg's history does have, you know, uh, light industrial uses and they're right here in the village. Although we tended to sort of spot zone around them, right? When, when zoning first came into existence, they, they weren't there. And then eventually these industrial districts were plunked down around the cheese plant and around the Jarrow Autobody and around Iroquois- And then eventually, these industrial districts were plunked down around the Cheese Plant, and around the Jarrow Autobody, and around Iroquois Manufacturing. So, I don't know. I don't know why it was
The history of all of that is kind of lost in the midst of time?
It would require, it would require reading minutes of meetings. We have those minutes.
When that happened?
We have those minutes. Whether they say anything about the, the philosophy behind these changes, I don't know. I haven't tried to read them. I've read lots and lots of minutes, looking for other specific things that we've wondered about over the years. My impression is that minutes of yesteryear don't ever provide you enough detail to be inside the minds of why these decisions are being made.
That's what I've seen also, in the discussion that's recorded in the minutes, is we talked about this and we decided that. But why is, is not there before my time?
I mean, I'm trying to understand some historical information, if only to determine a rational path forward. It seems to me to be highly unusual, say, for example, just on the surface, not really maybe understanding it fully, for us to have a limit on retail establishments, but no limit on many other kinds of uses.
Yeah, I could come up with an argument for that.
Well, maybe they're more parking-intensive, maybe.
I mean, I would
I wonder where it comes from, I guess.
Before my time, but, you know, I would think that the size of commercial establishments kind of scales with population. A population of 1,000 doesn't support 100,000 square foot grocery store. Right? But the size of an industrial facility is, is not going to scale with population, right? There are many other factors there. What's the size of equipment that you're using? What are you doing?
That's a good one.
Et cetera, et cetera.
I mean, I don't think NRG Systems would have came here if they could only build a 20,000 square foot building.
Yeah.
Right. Nope, they would have left. Because their building is, whatever, I gave 70.
Sixty-nine.
But that's the nice, that's, that's kind of where I'm going with the design standards.
Seventy thousand.
Is, it's a 70,000 square foot building, but if you look at it, it doesn't look like a 70,000 square foot building. I mean, it's chopped up. It, it looks like three separate buildings. You know what I mean? That's the design standard part that I'm talking about.
And that's what Joe's talking about too. But that gets us into, if we're not going to define anything by square footage, how do we define what it needs to look like? Does it need to be in pieces, no bigger than 5,000 each? Or, you know, how do we actually do the design regulations, which we don't have in this town?
Right, that's what we have to do.
We really don't have design regulations in this town.
Well, well, we do, but they're not specific about some of those elements. So, I keep pointing you at Section 5.22 and 5.6, which are our current design standards. But I think to get after the specificity that you're talking about, what we have is not up to that task.
Doesn't get needed.
But so, my question, and I was, I was hitting Jeff over the head with this when we were talking the other week, was the reason why you're talking specifically about a retail, a size cap on retail uses tonight, is because you proposed interim zoning, and you said if we're going to propose an emergency measure, which the Select Board decided not to pursue, we have to make that the first priority. And so, you're talking about this tonight because you need to know whether you want to move forward a retail size cap in the Commercial District of 20,000 square feet. If, if this conversation is helping you see that, that it's more complicated than that, that it needs to be more nuanced than that, then, then we need to explode this conversation beyond that one topic and get into the details of, should you be requiring multi-story buildings? Should we be looking at floor-area ratios? Is our lot coverage, maximum lot coverage amount out of whack? All those other kinds of design standards.
Another, another thing I think that relates to that very strongly is, we're talking about the size of a retail establishment. Maybe we want to talk about the actual size of the building.
Right.
No matter how many establishments are inside it.
Right.
What about the size of the building itself?
Yeah, and it's tough because lot coverage in particular is related to the size of a lot. And so, the bigger the lot, the bigger the coverage can be. A lot of these, especially floor-area ratio metrics are, are well-suited to the urban environment with very predictable and small lot sizes. Where there's a real incentive to maximize by going up. And, and here in Heinsberg, our lot sizes are large. And so, we need to have a slightly, we, we need to really think through how to make it work in cases where we have lots of, you know, small, medium, and, and rather large sizes.
You know, if, if I look at the typical commercial model, right, it's, it's a single-story. Right? And, okay, so there's, right, since, since it, most of this turns out a single-story, there must be a reason for that. Probably building cost, right? So, if you, you know, if you simply have a lot size and you, you have a coverage number, and you do nothing else, you basically encourage single-story buildings. Right? I mean, empirically, that's what seems to happen. So, if, if you don't like that, if you want, if you want the Commercial District to meld better with the Village District, with the Village, you know, Growth Area District that has multi-story, right? You need, you need to direct it in the regulations.
Well, and there are a whole host of other reasons for taking that tack. I mean, we're talking about a compact, walkable village. If the general encouragement tactic is to strictly only deal with lot coverage and restrict the size of structures, you know, in many ways, one could see that that does exactly the opposite. It just continues to spread things out, not optimize the use of land that we have. And that frankly, even the expansion into the Northwest and Northeast districts wasn't exactly uncontroversial. There are a lot of people who valued that open space. And now, we're going to utilize that open space and not put demands on it that would do the very thing, that would keep the Village, you know, compact in nature. So, I definitely think that some of these discussions about, I think it is more complicated, Alex. But I thought that from the beginning. It wasn't just a simple issue of saying, okay, we're just going to make sure that everybody in the Village is under five foot six, you know?
Yeah, and so, so let me be clear. On the, on my recommendation for the 20,000, it wasn't necessarily the, this is how we see the future of the town. It's a stopgap to avoid the 100,000 square foot, whatever. You know, just to keep things stable while we figure out what it wants to be versus you get a huge thing and then you've got a design around it, right? But I need, I need a question, and, and I, I don't want to divert us off into this. But you mentioned that even in the Commercial District and elsewhere, we've got a retail limit of 20,000 square feet of use. Then how did we end up with a
Commercial District.
But you said you did.
Not in the Commercial District.
But not in the Commercial District.
It was a commercial area.
That's what I thought, but then I would ask, I thought you said, I don't know if it's even in there, but it's not.
No.
So, so these density bonuses that allow you to build buildings taller,
Yeah.
to cover more of the lot,
Yeah.
to have less parking, those density bonuses apply in all of the Village District.
You're talking about the density bonuses.
Yeah.
But they don't apply to retail over 20,000 square feet?
They, they, they are not tied to the, the size of the use. So, so it doesn't allow you to go beyond 20,000 square feet in a, in a retail use in the, in the Village Districts. But it would allow a, a, a retail use to add additional parking, or to go higher, that sort of thing.
That's true.
What are the items that are bonuses that we give?
How do you get the bonuses? You get these bonuses right now, which are ability to increase your lot coverage, your building height, and have less parking. You get those bonuses by having a multi-story mixed-use building. That, you get a bonus for that. Mixed use meaning a mixture of non-residential and residential in the same building. You get a bonus if your building is LEED certified. You get a bonus if
Lowest level of LEED?
So, it's an à la carte. So, you get, you get a certain level of bonus for just certification. You get more for silver, and you get more for gold or higher.
Okay.
Similar with the multi-story and mixed-use building. The percentage of the building in residential use. If it's 20% residential use, you get a little bit of a bonus. If it's 30 to 40%, you get a little more. And if it's 40 plus, you get
Again, right now, that, that one, that one would not apply to the Commercial District, right? Because residential's not a
Oh, it is. You, you can do residential, but only on the second and third floor of buildings.
Seems to me a long time ago when Nasdaq did that, they had to come in for
For a waiver or something? Well, somehow, the regs must have changed, because it's written in now that residential isn't allowed use in the Commercial District, but only on the second and third floor of buildings. So, so the way you get these commercial bonuses are multi-story mixed-use buildings, LEED certification, substantial use of renewable energy technology that actually fuels a significant chunk of the project's overall energy footprint. And then the fourth category is important public spaces and public infrastructure. So, if a developer says, I'm not just going to leave this grassy spot over here for your park, I'm going to build your park.
Make a pocket park.
Yeah, or Actually, we, this, we've only done this once, and it didn't actually come to fruition. But Brian Bouger at Lampman's was maxed out on lot coverage. He wanted to bid on the state liquor store that the state wanted to locate in Heinsberg. But he couldn't, but he needed to put on a small addition to make that happen. He couldn't do it because his lot coverage was maxed out. He came to the DRB and said, there's a sidewalk segment over by Papa Nick's. I hear the town can't afford to build it. What if I make that sidewalk segment happen? It was about a $35,000, you know, equivalent cash donation. And at that point, the DRB said, yeah, that's, that's worthy. We'll give you the bonus. You, you make that sidewalk happen. Of course, he didn't, he didn't get the
He didn't get the license from the state.
Yeah, so it never, never went through. But that's one way that these important public spaces could be used. Another example was Brett Grabowski, actually, with the Heinsberg Center Phase Two Project, where he said, I, I want to build to your maximum density. You guys tell me I should build to your maximum density, but I have to get a bonus. How about I build you that, that, that small child's playground next to the police station? And the Select Board didn't think that was a good idea. So, he, he went about getting his bonus a different way.
I, I just want to bring up this notion, not that it will help clarify things, but in Lampman's, there are upper levels, second levels, for the offices and for some product storage. In the, both of the markets in town, the, the, what are they called? You know, the
City market?
The city markets, the two of them, both the newest one and the older one, have their offices and material product storage, not on a second floor, but in a second level within the overall volume of the building. And the building codes allow that. You can have a certain amount of balcony, so to speak, within the enclosure from floor to seat, floor to roof. If it meets certain criteria. It's got to be open enough, so if there's a hazard developing, the people who are occupying that level know about it. They've got proper exits out of it and so forth. It's not really a two-story building, but it is a second level. Some of the activities to make that business work can move to another level, upper level. It's not like going up and Homeport has
Right.
a whole level that's part of their store, and you walk up those big stairs that leads to the rest of their products. That's not real typical to put retail on where customers have to go on two levels.
There's nothing wrong with that model. I mean, it's more of an urban model.
Right.
You know?
It's actually fair and common. The building code lets you do that. It's defined as a mezzanine.
Yeah.
That mezzanine can't exceed one-third of the floor below it, and it needs to be open to it, and it has to have required means of egress out of it.
Right, that, that, that's there in the regulations.
Yeah.
So, just to kind of loop back. So, I think there's the broader thing that we talked about, just design standards. We're talking about, you know, like, like you said, Joe, maybe that's what we want, maybe it's not what we want, but it's sort of what it So, we know in broad strokes, we want a livable, walkable Village Core. So, how much further do we want to take it? And how do we want to define what those buildings, you know, based on a little bit we've learned and some of the, the larger folks that have come in and proposed plans? Do they fit the needs, customer, you know, customer? Public feedback, you know, how do we want to go? So, to Alex's point, we talked about the 20,000 square foot limit. Is, so I guess, are we going to keep talking about that? Or it sounds like it's more complex, and how do we want to proceed? You know what I mean?
I think it's more complex, but I, I do think as a stopgap measure, like you inferred, and also one that frankly is consistent across the entire developed portion, or not yet developed, growth portion of our Village, seems like a rational step. I, I don't, I don't, I'm talking off the top of my head here, but I, I don't think that's untoward in any way. I think, in fact, it seems perfectly logical. Why would we have this exception in one part of town when all of our other planning acumen led us to write these rules in this particular way for four-fifths of the rest of the Village? That doesn't mean that we shouldn't examine the whole issue post, post that. Because I think frankly, some of these density bonuses and some of the things that we have as incentivizing, the kinds of things that Joe are talking about, is talking about, you know, in these newly developing portions of the Village, I think could probably be improved upon to get the kind of outcome that we're perhaps desiring, you know?
I guess, the way I see the timeline here, right? I mean, Lot 15 aside, Lot 15 is Lot 15. It's on its own course, right? So, the, the, the long-term, I'll call it risk for, for lack of a better word, to the Commercial District is that a large use coming into Lot 15 encourages other lot, other large uses to come in, bulldoze what's there, and put in something new. And I, you know, I, I think there is, you know, history in that. Certainly, when Williston developed, I know for certain there were cross-contracts that said, we'll only be here if Store X won't be here as well, because they wanted the traffic. So, I think that's a legitimate concern. But at the same time, that does not happen overnight. If that's our concern, right, then I would prefer we talk it through and get it right the first time. I'm not talking years here. I'm talking months. But I don't know, I don't know that we need a reactionary 20,000 square feet tomorrow.
My fear is that it will take your eye off of the more important ball, which is the more nuanced conversation. Because the moment that you send this forward as a separate item, so Select Board decided not to do it as interim zoning. But you can do it through your normal permanent zoning channels, which means we write something up, it wouldn't be hard to write. You, you warrant a public hearing, you have the public hearing. You, you take feedback, maybe you make revisions, and then you decide whether to forward it to the Select Board. Then they have to deal with it. They have to hold a public hearing. All of that's going to take time away from the conversation of the more complicated idea of what is the right set of multiple design standards to get development to sort of look, feel, and work the way you want it to? And you've got some big projects that could, that could potentially, the community could benefit if, if, if a, if a more nuanced set of design standards wasn't, were in place before those projects came, you know, came in and started getting built and getting approved. The longer that you, you know, put the stopgap, the longer it takes you to put the stopgap in, the, the longer it's going to, it's going to take to get to the, the real end product that you want.
So, and I'll, and I'll add to that a little bit. So, so one is the 20,000. So, so one is a 20,000 square foot size to just even out the village growth. But then, to your point, there are other things out there with the water and everything that we talked about earlier in the year about, how do we do phasing? How do we do, you know, how do we step in the growth, regardless of what it looks like, just to stop sprawl kinda happening in the village growth? You know, how do we, maybe that's the more important topic at this point. And, and I just, because I think, my fear is, is if we say, we're gonna talk about all of it, we're gonna be talking about it for a long time and I, I just would like to see something get done sooner rather than later.
I don't think you should talk about all of those things that we, that are on the plate, like density bonuses, official map, mixed-use definition, design standards. I agree, I like your agile, you know, pick one and make it a package and send it to the select board, but if you're gonna pick one, pick one that's gonna make a difference. And I, and if you wanna do design standards, let's do design standards and put the rest of them off to the side for the moment and try to get those right.
Some of, some of those other things are self, self-regulating right now, right? We don't have wells coming online in, in the next month. We don't have, you know, we, we have, we have a, a hard limit on, on Setic. You know, phasing, that's kinda, that's kinda getting regulated by water and sewer at the moment.
You gotta do SWOT analysis of the town, right? What's our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, the threats that are coming and pick what are the most critical and then focus on those and chunk them out. So maybe I'm applying a different kinda logic than you do to normal regional planning, but you know what I mean? It's, it's kinda how I approach it, is it's a messy room and you gotta start somewhere.
But it seems to me there is a notion of risk assessment. What is the risk if we don't get the 20,000 set up? What are, what are we really preventing? These other factors, water, sewer, the general economy, those are helping us in a way to not have development coming into town, knocking at the door, many projects, uh, you know? It, we're, we're not in a high-risk, are we not in a high-risk, uh, situation, really?
I don't, maybe we need to talk.
I don't, I don't think we really are. I, I think what, what's, what's left at this point? I mean, if Hannaford, so to speak, is, uh, what's the term? Uh, not, not built, but, uh, is pre, not predetermined, but if it's, uh.
Invested.
Invested, um, what other lots in Commerce Park, um, are vulnerable to, um, this 20,000 square foot limit potentially, or no limit?
Even if you combine some of those lots?
I mean, if you took the, the Obashan's, uh.
I think a lot of people didn't really understand that you could build a bigger building.
Right.
You could just break it up. I mean, you could build, what, 100,000 square foot building? I, I bet most people don't understand that.
Right, the difference between footprint size, the overall size and the actual size per business.
I bet most people don't understand that.
I'm sure they don't.
But, but Ralph, you're right. For anything to come new, it would be a redevelopment of one of the existing lots or a combination of redevelopment and merging of lots. So, storage solutions, for example, that's ripe for redevelopment if that landowner decided they wanted to sell to somebody who really needed prime, you know, real estate in Commerce Park. The Obashan Plaza has.
He would need a bigger lot to build a bigger building.
Well, I mean, all, maybe, maybe, it depends.
There are no other large pieces of, no other large lots in Commerce Park.
But are we talking about just.
Think about redevelopment.
Or village growth.
It's a longer-term thing, but it's possible. A lot of those, a lot of those buildings aren't built for 100 years, 200 years.
Right. All I'm saying is it's unlikely that anything's gonna happen in the next five years.
Exactly. That was my point earlier, that was my point earlier, is that.
Is, is the portion of, uh, property where the Quonset Hut sits, um, and the, uh, used, used car dealership, I know that might be several lots, but is that part of Commerce Park?
Uh, no.
I didn't think it was.
We rezoned it in 2009 to beat it out of the village district.
So it's really Obashan's or for, you know, that little mall, um, it's, it's.
So really, who's, who.
It's really Dark Star, the bank, the medical clinic, the post office, and on the other side of the street, it's NezTech, uh, the vet.
Storage.
The beer place.
Towing.
Storage.
Right.
Towing and the gas station.
And then the commercial district at Ballard's, which is the same, has the same zoning.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
So emergence bank, the dentist office, travias, the library, the, the food shelf.
The gas station.
The gas station. And there is one undeveloped lot in there, but it's really small.
And it's also the topography, the topography of it is challenging.
Ascent encumbrances due to the stream.
Yeah.
Right. So, rather than focusing on the, the square foot size limit, should we focus our energies on something that possibly is more likely to, you know, that's why I was talking about staging and grow, you know, things that we've learned along the way, what are the things that we could have an impact on in reviewing those things? And are they right? Are they not right? Do we need to change something now?
I, I think more design standards, lot coverage, number of stories, you know, what, what, you know, where, where do we wanna, or how do we wanna direct developers into what we wanna see, right? That, that looks like a, a village environment, not an environment that's separate from the village.
So not just in the commercial district? You mean the village?
Everywhere, everywhere.
I think Alex made a good point, is, is, is that work, right, is really portable between the commercial district and any of the village growth districts.
Right. I really honestly see it as one big, I mean, I know we've got different uses, there's industrial, there's commercial, but for me, it's, it's, it's our downtown core and what does that look like? You know? And there's blends of different things there, but you know what I mean? So I, I guess that's the conversation is, is how do we go about?
Having that.
Having that conversation? And is it design standards where we're gonna go? Not so much on square foot to stop something that, maybe that's not the most beneficial use of our time, but it's more about.
So if you wanna go in that direction, you know, you can, you can talk about what you want, forget about the, the standards, just talk about what you want. Um, and you can also look at what other communities have done along, along the design standards front and how that's worked, uh, and we can, we can talk about some of those things. We can flesh out this, uh, floor area ratio metric and see if that's something that could help us. I think that it's good to know what you, what you think are the important facets or, or features of, of this village area, because some of them are, could be written into design standards and some of them can't. Like you wanna walkable village, I hear those words a lot. That's a difficult thing to have a design standard for, even though we do have some design standards that, that refer to that. But I also hear, we wanna encourage multi-story. Well, that's a very easy design standard to, to apply and we have some examples of other communities that have just absolutely required that commercial spaces be built to multiple stories. And Williston is, is an example of that, this, the pharmacy that got built on 2A, CBS, I think, um, same side of the road, the west side of the road with the, um, AT&T store or Verizon store and that, there's a Panera Bread in there, I think, or something. Um, anyways, that CBS store, I remember talking to the Williston planner that they had to build it two stories and they said, and they're never gonna use the second story. But they just did it because they wanted to be there and we made them do it. So there's, there's some, there's some lessons that could be learned from other communities. I think Milton also.
The root of the opiate crisis.
But, but I think Milton also had some past experience with requiring, um, mixed-use buildings, like every building in a certain district during a certain time period had to have, you know, uh, multiple uses in them and they had some pushback and some issues. So we could do some looking at those, uh, what worked, what didn't. But I think it would also be helpful for you to be thinking about, what is it that is the most important sort of feature of this development that I, that my eyeballs wanna see or that my, you know, feet wanna experience?
So we kinda have a list of elements that we wanna focus on to develop standards for.
Yeah, because there'll be multiple tools to, to, to do those things, but knowing what those, what your desire lines are, I think, would help, help me find some of those tools for you.
So like, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, please go.
I was just gonna say, for, for example, um, if you think about historically how Heinsberg has grown, like we just talked about, a lot of the main things are, are individual house-like things that are businesses. Well, do you wanna extend that look across the village? You know? Do you wanna go to a more Bristol where there, the old rollhouse ways? Do you want, you know, to let it go more the Williston way and more modern-ish, I guess I would call it? So that's the kinda thing, I think, you start very high and, and what is it we kinda wanna aim for and then go down into the details, maybe? Maybe, I don't know, I just.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, towards, towards that end, Jeff, I mean, you know, often, it's like Alex's example of, you know, what, what is walkable, right? So, okay, that's a, that's a pretty broad subject or, you know, what is, you know, whatever, but try and break, first thing, try and break this thing down into a number of questions that you wanna answer. What's an acceptable lot coverage? What's an acceptable number of stories? Um, not saying those are the only two, I, I, you know, there can be a lot, but what questions do you wanna answer? Have discussions around that, right? To try and, to try and at least answer some of the, some of the more technical questions and then I think you gotta have discussions on, and how, you know, what defines walkable, right? How do you, you know, how do you specify that in a set of design standards? We can come up with some ideas there, but.
So perhaps we start with what we have, which is the village growth area and then like, I know we had the old, it's been a few years now, but the Village Steering Committee did the whole design thing, maybe it's time to brush that off and say, is this what you think, where we're going? And then have those kinda conversations, is this the lot coverage that we think we want? Is this the density? You know what I mean? I, I don't know.
Alex, is there anything coming in to the village growth area?
Yeah, um, so Haystack, so we have these, the three large development projects, so Brett's, um, sort of medium-sized one, Heinsberg Center Phase Two to the west of Kenny Drugs, still sort of in limbo, waiting for water, Alec, you know, water to appear. Um, we have the very large project, which is the Haystack Crossing, Blackrock Construction Project to the north of that, uh, adjacent to the new rec fields. Um, and we have the, the Wind Energy Associates, Jan Blumstrom's property around NRG, that's another large, um, proposal that's just in limbo, has a sketch plan approval, waiting for water to appear. Um, Blackrock Construction is, uh, is in the process of, of drilling a well that has shown that they drilled partially and showed some promise. Hopefully in the next two months, they're gonna know, we're gonna know whether that well is a producer and if, if in fact, our, our, uh, water log jam is partially broken. Um, now, if that well proves out, A, it's gonna have, it's not gonna satisfy all of our needs and B, it'll probably take another year and a half or more to bring it online. So it's not like in two months, we're suddenly gonna have ability to do lots of development, but we'll have maybe, um, an answer as to whether there's a solution to part of the issue. So Blackrock, for example, well, they came and talked to you. Is that why you asked the question? Okay, sorry. So, um, they came and talked to the DRB, uh, the other night about the fact that they were working on this well and they, they wanted to come in with their first phase preliminary plat, uh, for their first phase of their project. So there is a project knocking on the door, but it, it will depend on that well proving itself out.
So, so that's, that's where I'm coming from, is what are critical things? So now you've got, let's say the well proves out, they come in, they say, here's my preliminary plat and here's my first phase.
Yep.
Does that first phase look the way we want it?
That's what we, that's what I think you need to look at.
Is, that's what I'm trying to get to, what are the things we can.
I mean, I don't know how much I can even talk about it, but.
But you know what I mean?
We had an informal conversation with them and it was open to the public. I, I don't think that.
If it was open to the public, what'd you talk about?
Preliminary phase plan is, uh, forbidden territory.
I mean, you can look it up, it's, they show what the first phase will be.
Yep.
And that's where every, that's what's hard to tell us. You want that phase to be, if you can never build again. Will it look all right?
Yeah, that's as far as it gets.
I think that's what we should be working.
Yeah.
One of the things we should be working on.
And to Blackrock's credit, they have been in very frequent communication with, with both the board and our office, trying to understand what it is that we want in terms of mix of uses and connectivity and all those things. So the clearer we can be with our regulations about what the community wants to see, the easier it will be for a developer like Blackrock to just do that. Um, you know, they're not looking to, uh, break Heinsberg, they're looking to, you know, do something positive, so.
Maybe that's where we start, we can take a look at that.
Because the phasing, it looks just like the master plan, it's just part of it.
I, I think you take a look at, at what Heinsberg wants.
That's what I mean.
I think you do, but sometimes hard for people to, um, yeah, I, I think you're right, but I think it's hard to visualize sometimes and concrete examples can be awfully good jumping off points for people who, you know, most of us.
But we have those, I mean, we have those all around us. We just need a look.
We have them all around us, but I would say that, um, how many of you, um, regardless of the creative nature of the zoning, um, and incentivizing and all this sort of stuff, have been to a new part of Vermont over the last little while? Call it Williston, call it Colchester, um, and said, wow, this is what we want? How many of you have done that?
Right.
I'm not.
You're not implying that nobody's tried, you're implying that they've been to those places and haven't seen what they liked yet.
I certainly haven't seen what I liked, uh, other than in historic terms, and that's not to, to remain, uh, someone who dwells solely on the past, but I've not seen enlightened examples of how villages and towns and cities in this state expand, not just this state.
Grow into especially greenfield areas, because I think there are plenty of examples of infill projects that are interesting, both from a site and architectural design sort of standpoint, but I agree with you that, that, for example, Severance Corners isn't, is a Colchester, it grew out of nothing. There was nothing there at that, for, the four corners and now on one of those four corners, there's a lot there. And if that's not what you're looking for, if that doesn't appeal to you, then, then it'd be a good idea to go, to think about what it is that doesn't work there, because, um, and how it could be done in Heinsberg differently so that it might work? Because there aren't too many examples of greenfield sort of growth center development.
Yeah, that you really, you know, makes your heart pound.
Or, or even that it's happened at all, regardless of whether it makes your heart pound, you know what I mean? I have a hard time coming up with another example of.
When you say greenfield, you're talking about land which is not built upon now, it's agriculture, it's fields.
Exactly. That looks an awful lot like the Village Northwest District or the Village Northeast District, two of our expansion districts that with the exception of the Riggs House on one side and NRG on the other side are largely white slates, greenfields, yes, greenfields.
So I guess the point is, is if we don't talk about it and we don't define what we want, they will.
Right, they'll tell us.
So.
Right, and it could be great, because sometimes creative, innovative people do great things, but as Ralph said, if history is any indicator, maybe, maybe not.
I haven't seen it anywhere.
Yeah, I'm not meaning to be, well, it's just not there.
Yeah.
I have no hesitation about that. In fact, uh, not to appear biased in any way, the, the Blackrock, uh, preliminary proposal, in terms of scale, in terms of connectivity, I'm not talking about quality or merit of the architecture, who knows at this point, but in terms of proximity to the existing village, um, you know, it's, it's actually, uh, starting to move in some positive directions, I think. You know, mix of uses.
Yeah, we, we.
Virtually every structure there is two stories, uh, or more, two and a half potentially in some places perhaps.
We worked hard with them.
Maybe it's a reflection.
Several years ago to, to, to say, if you come back and, for phasing and you're gonna have to come back for phasing, which part of the project is the one to go first? And thankfully, they agreed with us that it ought to be the southern part that would be connected to the, the existing village and, and they're committed to that and it's good.
Dennis says, if that's all that ever gets done, is that gonna work?
Right, right.
You know, will the traffic flow work?
At least it's in the right place. Now, what about the design, specific design standards for those two or two and a half story buildings and street networks that, those are things you can talk about in general sense. I do agree with Joe, I think it would be dangerous for this commission. I do agree with Joe, I think it would be dangerous for this commission to design regulations for that development and then try to get them in place, you know, before that development submits its next application. I think you can look at it, but I think you could also look at what Jeff mentioned, the Village Visual, Visualization Project where Mike Boucher, um, and the Village Steering Committee worked on a, a hypothetical design for that entire Village Northwest District. And, um, there are a lot of similarities to what Blackrock has proposed because they hired Mike Boucher, but it's not the same. And, and, um, you could look at that as a construct and not sort of get into hot water about, you know, designing regulations for a specific project.
I don't think we should be doing that, but I mean, I think this is another board that could help the DRB see through the phasing and see-
Oh, evaluate?
I mean, because, I mean, I think they're willing to take our recommendations and look at them. Just another board to see if they, it looks-
Even outside of the regulatory, eh, outside of developing regulations, have this board be an advisory board providing feedback.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be an important thing, I think. I don't know if-
That's what the Village Steering Committee was supposed to or trying to do before it-
Right, but they're not-
Blended away, kind of thing.
They're not active.
Right, okay. So, um, so I'm, here's what I, let me, if I'm, tell me if I'm right. Um, you do not want to pursue as the sole line of discussion in future meetings, a retail size cap to the commercial district. You want to have a more, uh, a broader discussion of overall design standards, um, and, am I right?
Yes.
And we're just not exactly sure, like, next meeting, what, what the, what the agenda should be, how that should be constructed to have, make that conversation move forward.
It might be fruitful for all of us to, to have the time to feed Alex some of the things that you think are important and make your own list, even if it's, uh, somewhat, uh, who knows whether it's germane or not, but throw it out there, you know?
Make your own list, we can do a fun little meeting where you put stickers on the wall and you figure out what you want and how you do it. I could really get you guys into software development lifecycle if you want.
Sure, we should save the sticker exercises for public forums, but we could do it as a part of this actual meeting. No, but you could write on the green wall, that's right.
You could help define what you need to go deeper into, you know, like, here's something we all agree on and let's go there. Otherwise, we, we might just be skipping around and never really get into something. You know what I mean? That's what I'm analysis for Alex, I want us to, you know, what should we focus on? And if we all say, you know what, this is something that matters to the majority of us, then let's go look at that, so.
So yeah, if you each fed me two, um, desired outcomes and/or design elements that are, you think are important for this village, then I could put that list up on the wall for the next meeting and we could put some dots on it, see where the, where the most dots landed.
Yeah, just something to get us-
And I can do a better job of actually providing you some resources and pictures about what floor area ratio are, or is.
That would be good, I think.
Yeah, the pictures help a lot. The word, it's hard to describe in words, the pictures make it much easier to understand.
Okay, does it help people? Um, you know, like sometimes, I'm sure we've all had this where you're, and, and Vermont has many fine examples, so do, you know, I was over in Maine this past weekend and it's really fascinating how the physical attributes of the land, you know, affect development. A lot of Vermont communities are rather sort of lakeside or they're at the intersection of a stream or in a little valley or, you know, often they're linear kinds of developments, it seems. Um, in Maine, it's all reacting, especially when you get to the coastline, it's all cheek by jowl. That coast is going in and out and all over the place. The roads do the same and so do the placement of the houses. It's fascinating to see how urban form sort of follows, you know, the geographic characteristics of the land, which makes sense, of course, you know?
And that was the economic reason that those elements formed there. They were fishermen.
Yeah.
That's where they built, that's where they had their, their boat sheds, their, their, all of their focus was what they were doing to earn a living, essentially.
Yeah. But anyways, to see some of those, um, pictorially, to see, um, examples of, you know, some well-constructed, uh, community pieces, you know, to help us perhaps. I mean, we often make this analogy with Bristol, um, or even Virginia, say for example, but I don't ever see that happening realistically in Heinsberg.
Right, correct.
You, you can see that in Williston, they sort of tried to manufacture that and on, what, what is the road, Route Two?
Right.
Uh, they've got, somebody mentioned it earlier, there's an AT&T and a few other things. And everybody parks on the other side, they've tried to make that the entry side of the building and make it look a little different. So they use different materials and they go in and out a little bit. And by the time you're all done, it looks like you have a poorly decorated cake, you know?
Yeah.
It's just, it doesn't fly, you know?
Didn't work.
Yeah, there are a variety of reasons that I thought about it, about why it doesn't work. But I think we also have some potential pitfalls here too. One of them is in the design of that, um, northern gateway where we decided back in 2009 that we would not encourage ru, uh, street frontage development on Route 116, that we would preserve a green buffer and push everything to the west or the east, if you're on the NRG side, and have, have things develop on the interior with like a parallel main street of sorts. And, um, you know, that, that may be something we should talk about because that is not the way most of these rural communities work economically. The, the engine of those communities is that golden strip of pavement that runs right through the middle of them. And by forcing everything off of that, um, we, we may be doing something similar to what Williston tried to do. It's like, well, we'll just make it look like this, but it doesn't actually work. We may be creating, um, you know, development in a place where the businesses can't actually succeed.
I, I, I thought when we talked about that, at least, at least, my, my idea of that was not necessarily inserting another parallel road between 116 and any businesses. For me, it was more, you know, do I, you know, do I want to encourage sidewalks snugged up tight to 116 going that far north? Or do I want to allow a little bit more space, move the businesses back a little bit so that it, it eases the comfort level of a pedestrian, you know, use in that area? You know, and it was, it was really, it was really that second thing that, that, you know, I had my focus on and, and trying to make sure that businesses were not snugged up super tight to 116.
Right, and so I just think it's worth thinking about it again, um, because a typical village streetscape looks like the one we have out front here where there's on-street parking, there's sidewalks are close, buildings are closer to the road and they, there's, there are economic advantages gained from that.
Well, even, even, even the on-street parking would, would serve really the same goal. It's a, it's a buffer between, you know, pedestrian flow and, and what is really a, a major commuter route. Um, you know, the other thing that, that you pointed out really well, I mean, really a big downfall of, of Williston is that, yes, they built storefronts, but not one of those places is, is really accessible from the sidewalk side, the, the real-
They put the parking on the other side and that's where the front do, main door is.
Yeah.
I know there's, you know, that's, that's been, you know, uh, for quite some time, not necessar, not necessarily, uh, hey, I'd say it's a conflict, but I know that when the Village Steering Committee was concocting that, you know, mildly naive plan, um, one of the things that we were looking at was the way in which you deal with those heavy-duty thoroughfares like Route 116 is. They, you know, it's reality, that stretch from, um, CVU Road all the way to, you know, pretty much Kinney's, let's, let's say. Um, and the tool that seems to be used, you know, you can go to like Rutland, Vermont, Clermont, New Hampshire is another one. Uh, there are several places where the green strip adjacent to, uh, call it 116 is substantial enough. We've done that a little bit so that pedestrian, bicycle, other forms of transportation can meander on down that without feeling like they're on the edge of the road. But then there's a secondary road, you know, almost a little, um, kind of sister road, so to speak, it's almost more of a lane with parking. And then the storefronts happen, or then the buildings happen. And, and, you know, if you, you look, um,
Like Wunuski?
Wunuski has that to some degree and in more modern form, but, um, you know, you'll find that, that kind of public ambles, so to speak, and then, you know, where the carriages probably stacked up at some point and then some kind of commercial presence. Not necessarily à la Bristol, like in Rutland, it's really a series of pretty much singular structures. And some are commercial law offices, some are not, you know, they've evolved over time. But I, I think, um, you know, if there's queasiness about the viability of commercial space, you know, set way back from 116, um, that, that was kind of an option or an alternative that I think we were at least considering. The problem, the big problem is-
Shows that, shows that, so we can look at that.
The big problem was always, um, um, the Riggs property, which sat in the middle of that and obviously, uh, there needs to be some complicity in, uh, you know, between developer teams in order to accomplish something like that, but-
And I think we also got, I think we had that show up on one, I, I don't know if it was Blackrock's, but I think we showed that at one point and it fell foul of the regulation, the current regulations because it was seen as parking in front of the building.
Yeah, that could be-
You know, even though it was a road and we were like, eh, it's not really, you know, there was things like that, so.
It was meant to be sort of on-street parking, so to speak, but, yeah.
I can't believe how many rear-enders you're at, that intersection.
Which one?
NRG.
Oh, yeah, it's because of the hill.
But some are even coming from this way.
Oh, from the south?
I'm just wondering if the state will ever let them have another intersection right there. They want to make it, you know what I mean? That's a, kind of a bad spot right there.
Yeah, I think when I talked to V-Trans about that once, you know, what they said was ideally that would be further south because of the hill to the north. Or you shave off the hill, which would be pretty hard to do, there's a ledge right there, but, you know, uh, anyways, yeah.
It was interesting, I always knew New Hampshire is mildly more backward than Vermont. I'm not sure that's an awkward, uh, an accurate perception, but, um, it was interesting. I sort of drove the route to Maine up along the northern edge. It's amazing, the number of roundabouts in, uh, New Hampshire and Maine. So maybe that just proves my point, I don't know.
You should go to Vermont.
Yeah.
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 I can't believe how big a, that's growing up there.
Yeah.
That place is really growing.
You want to discuss item four anymore or we want to move on to item five? All right, so item five is minutes of January 24th. Anyone else have changes? Anyone want to offer a motion?
Do we accept the minutes?
You have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. Okay. Minutes are there, we actually had the quorum do that. And other business, Alex?
Uh, I think I sent you the notice about the Panafford Projects 401 Water Quality Certification Public Hearing on February 26th. Um, so just know that that's happening, it's a public hearing, you can attend if you like. The Select Board is aware of it as well. Um, I don't know what else to tell you about it. It's a little confusing as to what it actually is, but, um, there was some information in the notice. They are affect, they are affecting a lot of wetlands and although they have a wetland permit, they'd still need to get this separate certification.
I think it has to do with their proposed process of doing the fill on Lot 15 in what sequences. The maps that they've included in that whole package show, we're gonna fill this area and then this area and then this, then we're gonna come back and slowly build it up. And they need permission to do it in that manner.
I would recommend if you have questions about it, to contact the Agency of Natural Resources person listed in the notice and ask. Um, or go to the hearing, but if you're interested, probably makes sense to ask ahead of the hearing. So if you want to speak at the hearing, you can do so intelligently. That was the only update I had. And I believe Barb has one as well.
Yeah, the Select Board is on board with us for the community dinner, May 25th. So, put it on your calendars. I don't know what- Yeah, will be-
Want to re-explain what that is so everyone's on the same page?
What are the cooks, yeah, what's the menu? What are we cooking?
I don't know yet.
Who plans that? Do we plan that?
Yeah. We could, yeah.
So it takes place where again?
At the United Church Hall from 5:30 to 7, it's a Friday night. It's basically a free meal, it's a great opportunity to meet members of the community, lots of people attend. There are jars for donations, donations go to the food shelf. It varies between 20 people and 60 people, so it-
And the idea is that we would all cook something and help serve it?
And serve, set the tables.
If you're looking for that, sure. Because we do have-
Bring the mashed potatoes when they eat more, stuff like that.
Like six o'clock, maybe, or?
Well, it's 5:30 to 7, is generally.
Should be there at four.
Well, if you're setting up, yeah.
Plus there's dishes to wash.
We do have a dish washer.
Right, there is a dish washer, but-
If it works.
That hasn't always worked.
No.
So as we get closer to the date, you'll, you'll, uh, you'll help us with assignments? Like I'm gonna do lasagna and somebody else can do this. I'm not volunteering for that, I'm just using it as an example because I have lasagna on the brain.
Yeah. That'd be great.
Yeah, lasagna on the brain, that does sound serious.
I'm hoping to make some tomorrow.
Ooh, yeah.
All right.
So, thank you.
Uh, anything else? Anybody have anything?
I won't be here at the next meeting.
I, I may or may not be.
I definitely will be.
Since what, March?
28th.
March 8th?
All right, you people need to tell me a little bit ahead, because if we don't have a quorum, the rest of the commissioners are gonna want to know, so. John, let me know, the other two, let me know as soon as you can.
February 28th?
Correct, it's, it's in the middle of school vacation, so if you're planning to be away with-
Oh, February 28th, because you were doing the, the dinner?
No, 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 next meeting. Next planning commission meeting.
You got time to buy a cookbook, yeah.
Yeah, no community dinner until May.
Okay, all right, motion adjourned. All right, thanks everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.